All right, great.
And I'll make the motion on the 1-9-23. Public minutes with corrections if need be.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any corrections? Questions, comments? All in favor. Roll call, Pete.
Yes.
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 And for announcements, we have the supervisors of the checklist will be in session at Town Hall downstairs in room 109 at 16 Main Street, Gofftown, New Hampshire, on Tuesday, January 24th from 7:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of making corrections to the checklist and for new voter registration. Change of address and party affiliation changes can be made at this time. If you are registering to vote, please bring photo ID, proof of date of birth, and residence address. Anyone not born in the United States must also bring proof of citizenship. Any persons with disabilities who need to be provided a reasonable accommodation in order to participate, please call Town Hall at 497-8990, extension 100, so that arrangements can be made. We have an announcement from DPW. The transfer station will be opening at 12:00 p.m. tomorrow, Tuesday, the 24th, due to staffing concerns related to storm cleanup. We apologize for any inconvenience and thank you for your understanding. They also had to drive safely, so please do that as well. And finally, we have an announcement on town and school candidate filing period. A reminder to residents interested in running to serve as an elected town or school district official. Candidate filing opens at Town Clerk's office Wednesday, January 25th during regular Town Hall business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The candidate filing period ends Friday, February 3rd at 5:00 p.m. Candidates filing on the last filing day, February 3rd, must appear in person. The candidate openings are currently listed on the town's website. The list will be updated through the end of the day on Tuesday, January 24th, and can be found by clicking on Elections Info on the homepage and looking under the Town Clerk's 2023 Elections Information. Derek, would you like to get started on the Administrator's Report?
Sure. If you go to page 15, in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the committee meeting schedule for the next three weeks. On Wednesday at 6:30 p.m., HCC is meeting at Grassmere Town Hall.
Got it.
At 7:00 p.m., the Conservation Commission is meeting here in this room.
Got it.
Thank you. Thursday at 7:00 p.m., Planning Board will be in this room.
I have that as well.
Next week, on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., the EDC will be here in room 106.
Got it.
The following week, just a reminder, on Monday, February 6th, at 7:00 p.m. is a school deliberative session at the high school auditorium. On Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., you have the town deliberative session, again, at the high school auditorium. Snow dates for the school are on Wednesday, February 8th at 7:00 p.m. And for the town, the snow date is Thursday, February 9th, again, at the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. Also, that Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. will be the Planning Board in this room.
Yes.
At your next page, you have your consent agenda. You have employee status reports for a firefighter resignation, firefighter new hire, and a DPW truck driver resignation.
Motion to approve the consensus agenda. It's presented.
Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. We'll take a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes, but I've got one question. Are we doing exit interviews on these people?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Mark.
I'm a yes.
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 Motion passes.
At your next page, page 17, you have your assessors' recommendations. You have a land use change tax and land use tax warrant. Both are recommended. One is map 4, lot 86-6-2, and map 6, lot 68.
Motion to approve the assessors' recommendations is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any questions? Peter?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
At your next page, on page 18, it looks like some, there's a few pages missing from the packet, so I apologize about that. But this is an RFP, draft RFP for townwide aerial base mapping. This, again, is used mostly by our engineering department when they are doing work on roads or reviewing any plans for a planning board. It's also used by our assessing department and our building department. We do this every 10 years, and the information is publicly available on the town's GIS system, which is on the website. So the request is, again, this was approved as a special warrant article on the 2022 ballot, and the board included this as an encumbrance at the end of the year. So we're looking to put this out to bid and hopefully fly the town before leaves grow this spring.
Derek, was there any mention in here of the turnaround time for that?
Yes, there was. We said what the turnaround time was. Unfortunately, I think...
I just want to check, because I don't...
Yeah, that's where I'm worried to see. Let me call it up.
Anyone else have any questions? Pete, do you have any questions?
Nope. This was already budgeted last year, and we're just...
Yep.
Proposed item.
Should be, yeah, I'm not seeing it. If you want, we can, when you do public comment, I can look through and get that answer for you before you vote on it.
See if it will be received until...
Well, that's when we're receiving them. We're receiving them, but I believe that we said we wanted it flown before...
I'll ask the question.
Yeah.
I just meant the turnaround time for when we get the actual maps back? Like a period?
Oh, I don't know that that was in there, to be honest with you. But, yeah, let me, let me look real quick. It looks like, like I said...
And it'll get paid until they get the map anyway, right?
Yes, yes. Typically, we drop the contract, and we also keep a portion back in reserves for a period of time.
Right.
Oh, it's actually under two. Imagery shall be captured spring 2023 on a day between April 1st and May 15th, best suited for leaf-off imagery capture between the hours. So there is no thing about return of data, but we can write that into the contract.
Okay. They might propose that anyways in our...
Yep.
All right, no other questions? Pete?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Is there a motion?
So a motion to be to release our RFP. Request that.
I'm in for a motion to release the RFP for the flyover.
Second.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Jim. All in favor, Pete?
Yes.
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 All right, great. And we'll go ahead, we have a minute, but we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Have they done anything?
Sure, it's public comment, yeah.
Why?
If you could just state your name and your address, please.
Name is Brian Mazur at 39 Trilly Park Road. I didn't see on the agenda that I thought tonight was where the Select Board, this body, would actually make a vote on the recommendation of library expansion?
Yes, so that will be included in the 2023 annual warrant, am I missing?
Yes, it is.
So we all, we will go through all the recommended, and then that's the petition warrant article that will also go on at that point.
Clarify, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that. And we have Chief Serena.
Okay, so the police chief is on page four, back there at the beginning.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, chief.
So we're in a really good place with our radio project. We're getting ready to, well, part of the snow's coming in. They were getting ready to start working on it and installing it. We're at a place now where they have our entire radio system built, and we went down and reviewed it down at their headquarters in Massachusetts. They're ready to bring it up and install it. We were going through some last-minute action items as a group, as a radio team, and as our, with our vendor, and we've kind of come to a conclusion that we kind of have a few things that we need to add on to this list of last-minute items. I'm hoping this is the last-minute items. We've been doing pretty well thus far. Once we put together this group, we realized that IT was looking to put a camera system at Station 17. As we do, we have cameras on all of our tower sites, so this was something that apparently we missed in our RFP process. We talked to IT about it. They, this is their quote that they got for, that integrates with our system here in town, so we'd be able to monitor with their current system. For some reason, the fence at the police department that we originally had around our tower, we never had that in the RFP. When we put that together, we have the one at 17. So somehow, between all 12 of us plus our consultant, we missed the fence at the fire, I mean, the police station. You'll see in that, in your packet, that's, that's another cost that we're looking to add. And then the fire department is looking to add a mobile and alerting system at Station 19. I believe that's comparable with Station 18's system. I might be misspeaking. Fire chief can add to that.
Good evening.
Evening, chief.
Actually, it's, it's not the same as Station 18. It's a replacement of the audio system only, the PA system for which the radio transmits over. Even today, before a new radio system, the speaker system in there is...
Yep.
Older than my kids, I guess.
Older than us.
Yeah, so.
So these are the additions we're looking to add on to our current system. The total of this is $19,885,71. Currently, in our ARPA funds that we have left over from the 1.8 is $37,731.05. As you know, we've been working pretty hard at putting this together. We've done pretty well with keeping everything right where we're supposed to be, so these are kind of the last-minute items that we, we saw moving forward. Hopefully, if you all could approve this, we'll give it to our vendor, and we'll get this, we're going to start installing the radios into our building here pretty soon, and then they're going to start working on the towers.
Question?
Well, go ahead, Pete.
These three items do qualify under that grant, right? Under the funds, use of the funds?
Yes, they do.
Yep.
Mark, you had a question?
Chief, explain to me the camera for $7,000, please. Well, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, it's a good question. IT gave me the quote. This is what they're looking to get. I'm assuming one of the cameras is going to be one of their 360 cameras they have that basically, as we have up in the mountains, is around the whole system. Then there's, I'm, I'm not sure, Mark, but I'm assuming based on what we have up there, there's also probably going to be a pantill zoom one that we can control as well. So we have another one up there that we can zoom in and zoom out, and then spin it as well. I did not see Brian's proposal on this. This is what he gave me when we did our working group. It's something that we can, we can probably ask Brian to get it to you.
So we're looking, we're looking at a couple of cameras then?
What we have, I'm assuming, yes. I don't know that answer for sure, but based on, based on what we have up at the tower that we have now, we have a, we have a 360, that's four cameras in it, and we have a pantill zoom one.
Yep.
This is also going to be the cost for the electrician, for wiring, and installation and labor.
Okay, thank you. I'll hold on a sec.
Chief, that was my question about the camera for connectivity. Are we confident that Station 17 has what it needs to operate?
So the good news is that currently, we're running on our Xfinity network. The plan, part of this project is to get that fiber, our fiber, installed there. Once that gets done, we'll have the, we'll have our fiber that connects to Town Hall, and they have a redundant microwave link that will send data back and forth, so...
And will we be able to do that in time to hook up the camera? And that cost Danielle shaking her head. So I'm assuming you shared the answer. Okay, great.
Matter of fact, our last meeting, we're told that the fiber optic company's ready to go. It's just regulatory stuff, you know, getting the poll owners to sign off and everything, but...
So they can already tap in with that project that we already have planned?
Yeah.
And then for the fence, did we go back to the vendor and ask them to honor the bid price for that?
So when we went through and talked to them, they only had one fence, and it was 17's fence. We never had anything written in, for some reason, for our fence at the PD.
So has this price gone up based from the bid, or will they...
This is what, well, this is, this is a quote we had from a local company here in town that could put together a fence for us. I think if we, when we used the CyberCom's vendor, the price was really high.
All right. Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Did the old tower have a fence around it?
At the, at the PD?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I guess it would.
Oh, why wouldn't the vendor have seen that when he was doing his thing?
You know, that's a good question, Pete. I don't know, and I was kind of perplexed, because everybody's been part of this radio committee. We did the RFP, we had our event, our contractor who's been working with us. We all missed it.
All right. I mean, we've got to put a fence around it, kind of.
Right.
I'm not sure.
The only, if we don't use the ARPA funds, the only thing I would ask is I was, I was going to go to the board next budget cycle and ask for the funds to put it up, so...
Well, why would we use ARPA funds?
That's what I'm asking for here now, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Any other questions? Chief, the only thing I would like is a breakdown of the information on the camera.
I actually have that here. Called up the quote. So the quote is for two cameras, all the mounting brackets, corner brackets, so the majority are the, the cameras themselves, which are $1,300. It looks like a piece, plus one-year care, quite a bit of cabling, 1,000 feet of cabling and burying the cable, and then labor, and... So labor's the majority, that's $3,000, because I know they're, they come with a bucket truck and everything, and then the remainder is all the hardware related to that, plus one year of licensing and one year of maintenance plan.
Derek, does that say exactly where the cameras will go?
It does not. Doesn't have, it doesn't have that level of detail. My recollection from talking at the meetings was it was a 360 camera. It was really meant to look at the tower to make sure there's no vandalism or anybody, you know, trying to do anything crazy on it.
So if it's a 360 camera, why do we need two of them?
I can only imagine that there's probably some blind spots because of where they're going to mount it on the, on the building. That's the only thing, but I can get more information for your next meeting.
I can give you some insights of what we have at our summit tower. It sits, one of them sits on top of the facility itself, and you can basically just see 360 around the fence, and then there are some blind spots. We have another camera on the tower itself that faces the facility, and then we can see around there. So you're essentially having one that kind of looks at the perimeter, and then one that's facing the door in the facility itself. So it's kind of like a dual security feature.
Makes sense.
Did we talk about warranties for the cameras? Did Brian say anything, or do you have anything on that, chief, as well?
There's, there's, it's one-year protection plans, and then what we do is we budget, we budget for a certain number of replacements a year.
Okay.
Take a motion?
I'll make a motion, we allow the radio project funding request for Chief Serena for $19,885.71 to move forward for Gofftown Fire Station 17 camera system, Gofftown Police Department tower fence, and miscellaneous for the Gofftown Fire Mobile and Station Alerting System at 19.
Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Pete. Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, Pete.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And Chief Murray, you can speak his name. Be fine.
Good evening. You have before you tonight a request for proposals, and as you know, this is a result of the petition warrant article that went through last year, page 5 of your packet. So the warrant article asks to seek consulting on what the cost may be to bring the station up to safety standards. So that's one of the first things we do there, and in it also is some options in case the station is deemed obsolete. Then it asks for some very conceptual prices to replace it.
Question?
Go ahead.
You haven't spent anything on this project yet, right? So you still have the pulchro running?
That's correct. We have not spent anything.
And which $20,000 is going to get you?
Well, within the, within the RFP itself, there are a number of options that they may be able to give us, and that would, would include either a standalone to find out what the cost to bring it up to safety services would be. The other piece would be what would be the cost of replacement. There's another piece in there that asks for some very conceptual drawings or elevations of the project of what they would do. We're very limited in what we can do.
Do you think $20,000 is going to get you that?
I honestly believe what we're going to end up doing is picking and choosing to what depth we want to go to on the study itself.
Have you done, we talked about this when this originally came up, about doing timing studies up there. Did we ever get a chance to do that?
Well, we have, we have dispatch data and back, as you recall, there are a number of studies done. So, you know, we can garner some information from those. We've done some very cursory, surface-like timing research, and when they, when they went to 24 hours, there was a pretty good time savings, because they were getting right out the door 24 hours a day, which sort of negated a delay that used to occur when firefighters and EMTs had to come from home.
Right.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Chief, so just looking at this probable construction cost, so is the initial plan to do sort of a feasibility study of the current building, HVAC, structural integrity, all those sorts of things first, and then look at what needs to happen to it to bring it up to fire code and EDE code?
Right.
I think it said or demolish.
Or that, right.
Am I right, chief? That can't even be brought up to our current standards. We can't even get the equipment in there.
Correct. So that...
Well, there is a construction problem, cost to maybe utilize part of that building, and then another structure area that affects this.
Right, and, and we ask them for that, too. You know, what type of materials can you put in that building? And yes, all those options, what, you know, what, what's the potential options? And it's, it's certainly not a building that is, it was designed to do what it did as a call fire station. But if you're looking towards the future and potentially, you know, manning that or having it revived again, then it's a whole different focus.
Well, I don't think there's any thought we should go ahead with the, our votes with the, until we get more information. I think that's what we were ordered to do when that article passed.
Correct.
Correct, yep.
Take a motion?
On that motion, we go ahead with it.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Colas. Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, Pete?
Yes.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
And Derek, we're back to E, Annual Audit.
Yes, this is one of the attached memos that got printed late for the packet. I'll ask Danielle to come up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
So in the boardroom this evening, you have a full copy of the financial audit for the year ending 12/31 of '21. This is the last audit that's completed by Melanson, the firm that we selected during the RFP process in the fall. We'll be doing the audit for the year ending '22. So this audit has with it the governance letter along with management letter, which is included in your packet. There were no significant audit findings, no significant deficiencies, so I'm happy to report that. They did have a few items noted for potential improvements to the general ledger. Those items, we provided responses to. We're considering some of them. The new auditing firm has already recommended against one of the recommendations, because the one regarding the trustees' activity being moved up to the general ledger, that's something that's very common in the state of Massachusetts. It's actually required for the state of Massachusetts, but in New Hampshire, it is not, and they've seen it create a lot of issues when you're trying to essentially duplicate all of the trustees' transactions on the town's ledgers. So we're still exploring those recommendations, but we've seen improvements each year in our audit and getting clean audits each year.
Well, congratulations to you and your team. Job well done, and if you can keep us updated on the changes that you're making based on the recommendations, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Do we need, do we need to make a motion or anything to accept the audit results?
I don't believe that you do, no.
Okay.
And Derek, the 2023 Annual Warrant.
Yes, so on... Yes, so on page 22 of your packet, you have the annual warrant. This year, Article 1 as always is the election of candidates and Article 2 through 6 will be zoning amendments. What you have here is a draft copy of the warrant for you as well as all of the budget committee's recommendations or not recommendation in one case and their votes. We need from the board this evening would be a motion and a vote on each of the individual articles on how you'd like it to appear on the warrant that goes to the deliberative session.
All right, so let's see.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Who determines the position in the warrant on the articles?
That is typically done, Danielle and I put those together. You will see that the petition article for the library bond is Article 7. That is a requirement, that it goes before the operating budget. So that is a requirement and that's why it's done. And historically, what we have done is we have done all your appropriation articles first and then you'll see at the Article 12 through the end, Article 16, those are not appropriation articles, so.
Can I answer my question?
All right, so we'll go through these in order. No action needed on Article 1 and then the zoning amendments, 2 through 6. So we'll go ahead and start with Article 7, which is the petitioned article. Do you want me to read these, Derek?
No, I don't think you need to. Article 7 is the petition warrant article seeking to bond $7.2 million for the renovation and expansion of the public library. You did hold the required bond hearing on this two weeks ago and you see the budget committees vote on this matter on your draft.
Need a motion?
Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I recommend to not recommend this article. I'm not changing my position on that. I think we heard again tonight that we may have another expensive project coming up. We have, we have the projects at Parks and Rec. I don't think, and Collis can speak up because he sat on that commission for a while too. We got a problem with that over there and I'm concerned if we lose the pools, we may lose the summer program and that's a very important program for a lot of people in this town. So that's why I'm making that motion. We have, we already have eggs in the, in the meat and fire with the Parks and Rec program. We have the fields started. We're now talking about a library, I mean a fire station possible and we also know that they need serious work and space at the police department. Those are life safety items, the fire station and the police station.
So Pete, your motion was not to recommend.
Right.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Pete, seconded by Jim, not to recommend Article 7.
I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, there's no question in my mind that, well, first of all, we've got a great library, great staff, they put on great programs, but there's no question in my mind that the library itself, the building is substandard and does need to be upgraded. That library provides wonderful resources to this town. Both of my children were growing up, they went to many, many programs there, they were all great. When I was studying for an exam for a professional licensing exam, I used it a lot. It was great. So it's a great library. That having been said, it is woefully inadequate, doesn't meet the needs of the town's folks and I'm not going to reiterate what Peter said. We've got a bunch of money articles coming up in the not-too-distant future and Pete's already touched on many of them. So although I support the library and what they do and I would encourage them to come back at some point in the future with a scaled-back project that is more in line with all of the other money projects that need to be brought forward and constructed in this town over time, with a scaled-back design after working with their engineer and architectural team and I would encourage them to do that. So I will be voting to not recommend.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say ditto to what Collis said. I think we all feel the same way. I like everything about this project except the cost and the timing. I think just the timing is unfortunate, but anyway, that's it.
All right, roll call vote, motion is not to recommend. Pete?
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes not to recommend. Okay, Article 8, which is the operating budget.
I'll make a motion that we present Article 8, the operating budget, as presented this evening.
To recommend?
To recommend, yes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any comment, question? Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 All right, motion to recommend. Up next, Article 9, appropriation from the EMS budget, Article 9.
I'll make that motion.
To recommend?
Done.
Great.
Second that one.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Jim, to recommend. Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes to recommend Article 9. Article 10, fire apparatus, capital reserve fund from unassigned fund balance.
Motion to accept and approve.
You recommend?
Recommend, second.
Great. Motion by Mark, seconded by Collis. Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 Okay. Article 10 passes. Up next, Article 11, Crispin's House.
Motion to approve Article 11, second.
Motioned by Mark, seconded by Collis, to recommend. Any comment? Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 Okay. Passes to recommend. Article 12, the modification of elderly exemption levels.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Jim, to recommend. Any comments? Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 Okay. Motion passes to recommend Article 12. Article 13, modify exemptions for the blind.
Motion to recommend, second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim, to recommend. Any comment? Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 All right, Article 14, re-adopt optional veterans and all veterans tax credits.
Motion to recommend, second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim, to recommend. Any comments? Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 Article 14 to recommend. Article 15?
Can I give a little bit of backstory on Article 15?
I was going to ask you that.
So as we were working through the end of the CIP process at the end of the summer and into the fall, it was determined that the town of Gofftown has had an active CIP committee since 1982. That was immediately after the master plan was completed and they recommended CIP. CIP was authorized by state statute effective January 1st, 1984. Again, we had an active CIP committee at that time, but it never went to town meeting to seek authorization to form a CIP committee. So we are seeking to do this house cleaning item. This would not change the procedure that CIP follows. It would still be a committee appointed by the planning board and reporting back to the planning board and then the approved matrix would be presented to the different governing bodies, the school board and the select board and then go through the budget process.
So Derek, because it's an arm of the planning, planning board, what happens if this fails?
I think we would have to talk to council about that to see if that would be, if we would still do the six-year planning process.
Well, no, no means no, doesn't it?
Yes, yep.
So even if, even if it gets sorted down, it's no and then we'd have to come back out with something again next time, check and reinstate it.
If the state statute mandating it, is that?
No, there's a state stat, it's enabling legislation, but it has to be authorized by town meeting. There are, there are two different ways you can do it. Either the planning board approves of the, or appoints a membership or the governing body does. So we're not looking to change anything, we're just looking to get this cleaned up.
I'll make a motion to put Article 15 on the ballot for the recommendation from the select board, second.
Motion by Collis, seconded by Mark, to recommend. Any question, comments? Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
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 Okay. Article 15 passes to recommend and Article 16?
This was submitted by petition and it was certified by the supervisors of the checklist of having the necessary number of signatures.
Is there anyone here to speak to it?
Where did this come from?
There is, there is not anyone here to speak to it. We have reached out to them and we have, we're making them aware of the deliberative session. Again, this is seeking to have a resolution passed at town meeting, speaking to, I think it was the New Hampshire resolution to take action on climate pollution.
I mean, I, I have a lot of questions on this one and with no one here to speak for it, do we have to make a recommendation prior to deliberative session?
Yes, I believe you do, yes.
I have concerns, this is.
Yeah, so do I.
I mean, there's nobody here to speak to it, it's a very complicated issue, very complicated issue and there's no one here to speak on it, to answer questions or take questions and come back with the answers. So I'm not comfortable putting something like this on the ballot that, quite frankly, I don't think the average, average voter is going to have any inkling what it's talking about. As far as understanding. Right. Now how they're going to make an educated vote on this.
Hey Kelly?
Yep.
It's going to go on the ballot either way. This is just a recommendation, right?
Yes, that's right.
I'm making a motion, we do not recommend.
I'll second it.
Yeah, that's a bummer. Derek, just to clarify.
They haven't come to promote their, their position at all and normally somebody would come in and speak to it and tell us why that we want to do this with the information. We don't have any information on it except we have an article that they want us to put forth. I don't think that's a proper way to do it.
That was my comment exactly.
Derek, just to clarify, you've invited the petitioner?
I have not, but Catherine, what we do is we typically tell that, we explain the process and that when a petition is submitted, that the select board will need to take a, if it's not included for appropriations, that the select board will need to make a recommendation and then we provide the person, I guess the lead petitioner, with that information on when the deliberative session is.
I just want to say, I, I think it may be a good idea. I mean, I'm all for starting to deal with these kind of issues and it only asks for a resolution to the, to the state and federal elected officials, but I agree that, you know, I don't know, I don't know if they're meat and potatoes of this thing, so I hesitate to do the same, so.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, not to recommend. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call vote, Pete?
Not to recommend, yes.
Not to recommend.
Yes.
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 All right. Okay, and we'll put some clarification on that in the deliberative session script for the select board, so you can explain that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, that's it for that. Derek, we have this town administrators pending assessing tax legislation. Do you want to talk about this?
Yes, you have three bills that the assessor brought to my attention on Friday afternoon that he asked to bring to your attention. The first is House Bill 177. This is relative to the definition of qualified structures under the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, 79E, which the town has adopted. This would add in vacant land as a qualifying, I guess not structure, but under the definition. Previously, the point of this or the desire of the tax relief incentive was to, for the rehabilitation or replacement of dilapidated structures in village centers and then the additional value added would not be taxed on for a period of time, so somebody would not see a spike in their property taxes. This would allow this to also be used to vacant parcels of land. So you'd have a vacant parcel of land with a value and then that building gets added on, but that new building value would not be necessarily taxed at full value right away. There would be a period of five to eight years depending on what they built.
And what's Scott asking for?
He's going to, he is, just wanted to bring these to your attention. He had planned on sending written information on this one. Also, House Bill 294, which I'll speak to in a minute. The one he only had real concern about was the last one, House Bill 403. So I guess I can answer any questions on House Bill 177 or continue.
Well, if I understood what you just said, or what was said was, if there's a vacant parcel of land and it's got some shit on it, somebody comes in there, puts a 3,000 square foot house on it, they wouldn't have to pay taxes for five to seven years.
They would be able to apply to the select board under 79E. You still have, you would still hold the necessarily, necessary public hearings on it, so, but yes, they would be able to apply for that.
Okay.
Collis?
So if I read this, Derek, it sounds like, so it's talking about specifically land, kind of separating land from structures.
Yes.
It sounds a lot like a local super fund program, if you will. Maybe you go on a piece of land that's vacant, but it needs some cleanup done to it or needs some revitalization done to it, and a certain cleanup type of work. Am I, am I right?
Only it doesn't, there's, I don't believe that there's anything in this legislation currently that talks about any cleanup.
Oh, okay.
So I, so I guess you're, you're right in that regard, but they mostly talk about the property. There's not, nothing really talking about.
Land per se?
The land.
Would it change, you know, the criteria that we check off?
It would still, you'd still have the same criteria, so it's still under the same application. It would basically just allow more properties to take advantage of it.
Okay. Do you want to go to the next one, Derek?
House Bill 294. This allows municipalities to adopt a per-child property tax credit. Again, a credit is, currently we have veterans credits, that is a direct, I guess, savings off of a property tax bill. So that would be enabling legislation, if it were to pass, that municipalities would then have to adopt. Again, there's no ask for action, NHMA has not taken a stance on this, but did want to bring it to your attention. And then the final one is House Bill 403. This bill allows selectmen or assessors to abate taxes only for administrative or clerical errors. This removes the language in the law that talks about for good cause shown. It really is only administrative and clerical errors. Scott Bartlett as a. Scott Bartlett, as a participating member on the Board of Land and Tax Appeals and everything else, the standard, the Assessing Standards Board up at the state, he'll be speaking to the potential impact of this. Again, this, if an assessor were to, in the property owner's opinion, overvalue a property, that's not really an administrative or clerical error, so it may take away a property owner's rights to seek abatements.
Well, please tell Scott, thank you for bringing these to our attention.
I'm kind of, if I may, do the, are reps aware of, I'm kind of thinking we take a position and let our reps know if we want to do that, otherwise this is just information, right?
So right now, they are in committees, so I will say that they are in committees, and none of Goffstown reps serve on the House, Municipal and County Government Committee. There are a couple other bills that I have spoken to. I spoke to Representative Alexander about one item that he had sponsored, just to kind of get some background on that. So I guess when it comes out of committee, if there is a, if there would be a vote to adopt, we can bring it back to your attention and see if you want to take an official position on it, when the state reps would be able to vote on it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, new business? Anyone have any new business? Okay, on the action matrix, Derek, any movement with the police station?
Yeah, I actually had a very good conversation with the county administrator last week, so I'll be sitting down with the police chief to follow up on that next week or so.
The policy work group, no movement there. Carlos, any movement on the pedestrian?
Derek, is there...
No, I'll send that out tomorrow, first thing.
Because I know we've got committee members who are champing at the bit to get going, and one in particular wants to chair it, so we're ripe for a first meeting.
Okay.
Okay, fee schedule, I know we have that planned for February.
Yeah, we talked about that at department head meetings, and the department heads have turned it out there, so we just need to collate everything and bring it back to you.
Okay. And, so let's see, ambulance three is out. Is it still scheduled to come back this week, end of next week?
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully, yes. And the tower, any update on that?
Yeah, that's routine service maintenance, or it's complicated, it's for the tables, making sure they're all adjusted.
And any estimate on when that will be back in service?
I'm hoping this week.
Okay. VACON still out, did Adam confirm?
I've got Adam on the line, because he's, I'll unmute him.
Okay.
Adam, can you hear us?
I can.
Can you give the board an update on the VACON and the 100-yard live floor trailer?
Sure. The trailer is still at Donovan. They have moved it into their base, though, so hopefully now we get some action. It was outside, they couldn't make enough room for it for quite a while. So hopefully have that back by the next meeting. The VACON, we have not even gotten into it with the storm at the end of last week, and now with the beginning of this one, so VACON, same status. I've got something going on with some of the injectors that look like in the engine.
Okay. Ask Adam a question. Adam, new scale up and running, any problems with it? Is it, do you hope that would do?
Ah, yes, sorry, new scale is up and running. No problems per se. We did have a comment from the City Hampshire Ways and Measures as a final step, they come down and they certify your scale again for the next year. And during that process, they'd like us to update our user list in the software to make sure that each Waymaster has their own login, so with the ticket it will say whoever the Waymaster was for that day, which we haven't previously had. So we're working on that with IT, but other than that, everything seems to be as expected and working well, gaining revenue again.
Raking into cash?
Hands over fist, except the last few days.
Thank you, Adam.
All right, anyone have anything for the action matrix? Okay. Derek, do you have anything else for the consent agenda?
No, I don't have any other items.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and open it up for our last public comment for this evening. Anyone like to speak at public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I will take a motion for non-public, please.
Going to non-public session, RSA 91A, colon, 3, comma, 2, A compensation, and D, land. Anything else, just that's it?
Just those two.
Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Took a roll call, Pete?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
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 Great.